I would like to call our Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board meeting to order. If everyone could stand and face the flag and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like a motion to approve the agenda. A motion has been made?
Could I make up, just add something to it?
Sure.
Okay. On old business, make sure we discuss the adding of more members from Corey Valley to the supervisory union. We had discussed that last month. And under, just to, I would like to just, from old business too, just to add something about the Listen and Learn Tour from the AOE. And then, you got that okay? And then just the letter to an executive session. Thank you.
Okay.
What's the letter about?
That's the letter that everybody got at this point.
And does it fall under open meeting law as far as executive session goes?
Well, there's some things in it probably that would not be good in open meeting, if we're overleading one.
I don't think it covers it, just the letter that I got.
Well, I can do it in open or the other, it doesn't matter. If you feel it's open, we'll do open.
So I guess that would be new business?
Mm-hmm, we could do it under new.
Eric, there's a need for executive session for legal.
Okay. When we go into that, you'll handle what it's about. Okay. Okay. Anything, any other additions, deletions? Discussion? All in favor?
All opposed.
Closed? So moved. Moving on to general public comments.
Hi. For those of you that joined on the meeting, I'm Tina Kishaba. I'm here as a parent tonight, but I also happen to be the Chair of the SU Board. Just wanted to make that, make you all aware of that. The reason I'm here is because I was hoping that your board would consider transportation for school choice students, particularly from Rutland Town, which is where I'm from. My son's in eighth grade right now, and I've been on the Rutland Town Board for the last few years. And one of the concerns I hear from family every year when they're kind of debating whether his is going to go is transportation. Rutland Town does not provide transportation because it's very complicated with all the different schools that it could go to, and it hasn't really been brought up for us. But what I was thinking was if Proctor and West Rutland particularly, Polton is kind of far for Rutland Town students, but if the two closer schools, or at least one of them, offer transportation, it may make it more appealing to families in Rutland Town, and maybe it would increase their enrollment. So it's just something to think about when you're discussing your budget as an idea.
I think that would be a great idea to discuss. Of course, we're not going to do it tonight, but we definitely will in the future, I think. Anybody have any questions for Tina? Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. There's been a motion made to approve approval of the minutes for October 10th, 2024 meeting. All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I want to entertain a motion for approval of the warrants. Motion has been made. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
So as it says here, it's information only, so I know we have a lot of items on the agendas. If you have any questions, we'd be more happy to answer them at this time. I would like to just publicly thank Linda Smith, who attended the VSA/WSBA Fall Conference and Lake Moore on behalf of Corey Valley. So I just wanted to say thank you to Linda for attending.
Any, anything else, Chris?
No, without any questions.
Any questions for Chris?
Some of these items will be covered in the Cost Driver presentation, if you want to look it later.
Okay. Moving on to principal reports. Who wants to begin?
I can go.
Okay. Oh, Linda?
Linda's doing something there.
Oh, I didn't see you, sorry.
We can't hear her. We can't hear Linda.
Can't hear you. Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was hitting the wrong button. I apologize. Just, there was a good, at the WSBA, one of the ones that they did was the community engagement, where they were looking for equitability for all schools, for all students.
Linda, Linda, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So we have, we have, under new business, we have the VSA/WSBA Fall Conference in there for you, for you to talk about the conference then.
Okay, because it was in the superintendent's report.
Yeah.
That's why I brought it up here.
Yep. Yeah, so if you want to talk about it then, that'd be great.
Okay. Can I just ask, he did the fact draft last meeting. Has anything happened? Has anyone, is it out there, or is anybody sending questions?
Is the what? Fact, the fact draft? I'm sorry, what is that, Linda? The FAQ?
You talked about last month about the teaching of the community thing.
So, yes, Linda, and we'll talk, but yes, we put together GRCSU Communication Plan, and as part of that plan, we worked on the FAQs. That is on our budget websites. We do have a button which any community member can submit questions, and as of this point, we've had no questions submitted to us. We've had a copy of presentations. The presentation due tonight around the cost drivers will also be on the website. So that budget website is active, so if you need help, I'll help you find that.
Okay. No, thank you.
All right, Jay, you're up.
All right. Again, information only, a couple of highlights. I'd like to thank all of our teachers and our parents for parent-teacher conferences last week. It was, we had a pretty good showing. In fact, I had several teachers that said they had 100% participation, so that doesn't happen always. So that was wonderful. And then, after a couple of years of debating and trying to get this up and running, working with our National Honor Society, we created some K6 assemblies for this year based on character traits that are the same character traits that National Honor Society members have to exhibit to be part of that, so trying to build that continuum. And so last week, two of our National Honor Society members, Peyton Gueye and Maggie Tharian, led the assembly, and they did a great job, and we had a wonderful turnout. And I just wanted to highlight, this was something the faculty had, we had been mulling around, and we wanted to, if we were going to do it, we wanted to do it right. And I want to thank Pam Not, one of our guidance counselors, or one of our school counselors, for all of her behind-the-scenes work with us. So, any questions I can answer that you might have?
Great, thank you, Jay. Any questions? Next?
You do have my report. If you have any questions, you can ask, of course. I would like to invite you to come to our circus tomorrow night, 6 o'clock. All the classes have been performing during their specials time with an artisan residence, thanks to the PTO, so thank you very much. And it's sure to be a good time. If you went a couple of years ago, it should be a good time. I do need to ask the board for approval for two field trips. It's in the bottom of my report. The sixth grade trip, they would like to go to the Adirondack Tree Top Adventures in Bolton, New York on May 23rd, and then the third and fourth grade, Six Flags New England and Iguodala, Massachusetts.
I'll make a motion to approve both the field trip requests.
A motion has been made. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving on. Thank you. Next, Joe.
Same thing. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Just a couple of highlights. Our new Associate Principal Athletic Director, Mr. Gudseck, started a Student-Athlete of the Week, and it was so popular that we decided to do a Student-Arist of the Week, so we put him in the art club and the music program as well. So we call it Athlete of the Week and Artist of the Week, but we do it every other week because we're pushing our Monday morning meetings back, but it's being very well-received. Again, piece of the culture on that. We, we just met at our staff meeting last night, and we're talking about, you know, academic awards and stuff like that, and looking to, you know, we start redoing the honor roll and stuff like that, working on the criteria for that since the quarter ended last week. So we're looking forward to, you know, honoring the academics again too, and kind of getting back into that. And one of those, it was, I put down 10 minutes to discuss it at the board meeting, had to shut it down after a half hour because it was a really great part of our staff meeting. It was one of those really rich discussions, and we could have gone on, and we just had to stop and move forward. But, you know, bringing up some good talk among our staff, so we're looking forward to doing that. And just found out too, the other day, we did have our night game at Castle and State College in the Booster Club. It was a really huge success, great crowd there. So it was nice, and hopefully we can continue doing that. It was something, you know, great Rutland County thing with our West Rutland, Proctor, and Polton boys there, and got no reversal.
It was good.
Thanks.
It was a good event. Next?
Mine is also in there. If you have any questions, I do need to ask permission for our sixth grade trip to Boston, May 16th, just a full day in Boston. It's a trip that happens every year, so they'll go down and spend about 17 hours round trip, exploring Boston. It's a fun time, you should go. Brilliant, I got to go my first trip, it was wonderful. We held our second Character Trade Award yesterday morning, focusing on teamwork, so another, seven students were nominated by their classmates and their teachers. If you come through the building, you can see the display of students. It's really fun to watch them get excited about themselves being on board, and then they get to take home their picture and their, what they're excited about as well. We had a fantastic time at the high school for a trunk-or-treat. It was a really cool event. Hope we get to do it again. It was really fun. And in my report, it says that the Scholastic Book Fair, we actually are going to get back more than 40% of the sales. We increased since the time I submitted this report. We should be getting up to 60% of the sales back from the book fair. So it was a highly successful book fair, and we just actually sent it off yesterday.
Next.
We just refunded, replenished the library and purchased some furniture and such through that.
I'll make a motion to support the Park Elementary School Boston trip. That was in May?
May, yep.
A motion's been made. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Jen, you're up.
I was going to talk about the trunk-or-treat, but Liz stole it, so I'll just say it was really cute to have all the littles over.
Thief.
Yeah, thief. I was dressed as the wicked witch of the West, and none of them were scared about, of me, so that's really disappointing on so many levels. We do have, yeah, I almost think we have the coming up, which is a theater production on the 22nd at 7:00, November 23rd at 5:00, and tickets are available at the door. We have students from West Rutland, we have students from Rutland Town and Proctor that are in this play, so please come out and support the arts, very important. And then, I would just ask for an extra month to come back to the board about our senior trip. Our students had come forward with some ideas that maybe weren't really great ideas at this point, fully fleshed out and budgeted for, and so they have learned the realities of what that means. So they're going to come back with a better idea of a real trip for them to take next month.
No Hawaii trips?
No Hawaii trips, although they are jealous of West Rutland and going to Florida. They just couldn't bankroll that one this year, so.
Any, any questions for Jen? All right. Moving on. Okay. Moving to old business, that would be me, the Poltony Tennis and Basketball Court Repairs Update. So Sarah got the grant in, and she's reading through the grant. She's been reading through that since our last meeting, off and on, I imagine, and I am going to be meeting her tomorrow to discuss the grant, and I will be asking her about grant money for Proctor's tennis courts as well. So I will definitely have an update for everybody at the next meeting. Does anybody have anything that they want me to ask Sarah at the meeting tomorrow? No? Okay, great. Moving on. Moving on to new business.
We were talking about the adding more members from Corey Valley to the S U.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Sorry.
Okay, I asked everybody to take a look at the Articles of Agreement, to see how they felt about that, to see if we could get more representation from Corey Valley onto the SU Board. Nobody has anything to say about it? Okay.
How many members are on it now?
One.
How many members are on the board now from each town?
Three. Three from Rutland Town, three from Wells Springs, three from Corey Valley, one from Ira. I just thought it might be nice if we brought it up to see if we could get more representation.
Do you mean like using a percentage approach?
I would have a discussion about how they would, I mean, part of this is just trying to get people to talk about it, to talk about things. We don't have a lot of representation, and there's a lot of things that happen in the dis, you know, we are not a, we are a district supervisory union. There are many things that happen at the SU that we have no control over because of the fact that we only have three members from five schools. And I just thought it would be nice to have some kind of a discussion about whether it would help to have a little bit more representation.
I want to ask you, members in statute?
Right. We would have to do some work on this. It's not something that you can do automatically, I recognize that, but it would be nice to have, I mean, if you, if nobody feels but me that we need more representation, I'm, okay, I'm just bringing this up as a discussion. If you feel that everything is great, and you're getting everything that you need from this part of you, then, fine, I will be quiet, but I just thought it would be nice to have a little bit more representation.
How many kids in Rutland Town do we know? Roughly?
350, Bo?
350.
So I'm going to share a copy of the GRCSU files, just so you can understand, you know, the.
The structure.
It was adopted at the, at the merger.
At the beginning of the, yeah. And they haven't changed since we, we began?
This is the way the S U was set up prior to merger as well. But doesn't it say in statute, all operating schools have three representatives to your supervisory union, and non-operating schools have one representative?
Has anybody thought about the fact of maybe going and maybe not having districts, and just going to a supervisory union with representation from the school, so that we only have a supervisory, a district supervisory union that does not have districts with each having, you know, their own meeting monthly, that Chris would only have to go to one, and it would be more of an equal representation if we were that way? Has that ever been discussed before?
Wasn't it discussed before the merger?
Yes.
Well, we are six years past the merger, Mike. I'm asking now, six years past the merger.
It would mean a fundamental change in agreement.
When we did the merger, because I was part of it, there were many things that were left unsaid because the person who was doing and helping us with the merger did not have all the information. Many of it was just basically said, "Well, we can't, we don't know that for sure, but we think that if you don't do it this way, the state can come in and tell you how, how they want it to look." So this was a way that was thought about. I'm, I'm just bringing up, is there anyone interested in it being more equal in terms of representation? You know, and the other thing I recognize is that Rutland Town, Proctor, and West Rutland had a relationship before the merger. We came in sort of in the back door of the merger, you know, and it was kind of a bumpy, a bumpy ride for quite a while. And I'm not sure sometimes where we, you know, and I'm saying this from my point of view, all right? And it's also brought up in the letter that I wrote, is that sometimes I feel that Poltony gets left out of it because, you know, you bring up the fact of, you know, that Proctor and West Rutland decided that, you know, "We're going to rent a bus and go on a science trip." Did they, did anybody think about the fact that maybe Poltony would have liked to have gone with it? It's that kind of a thing I'm asking about. I'm not criticizing. I'm saying, could we just have a discussion about it?
Will you refresh, will you refresh my memory? Wasn't Poltony sort of the black sheep, and they were really desperate to find somebody to join because they tried to join a couple other districts and they weren't accepted?
Well, I think a lot of people were also.
No, no, the question.
No, we were not the black sheep and were trying to find a district to do that. I do not remember that, and I was there also during this time. I mean, we could say that Rutland Town was a black sheep and tried to get into Barstow and couldn't get into Barstow. That's, this is the past, here is the future of the school for every child, every student. Could we be looking at things differently than we are doing right now? That's all I'm saying, you know? Sometimes change is hard, but having a discussion about it doesn't make it right or wrong, it's just a discussion.
How many kids in Corey Valley? Roughly enough to the 30.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
How many members in Corey Valley do you know offhand, Linda?
How many members?
Or kids, students, sorry.
So over 1,000?
I'll get a number for you in a second. These are, these are, that's why we, you know, the discussion for us, we have to make sure ready to go.
Can I just clarify something about the field trip? So it's on record as fact?
Of course.
It was an AP US History Field Trip. Joe, do you have AP US History in your building? Okay.
Did you want the ADMs up, you wanted?
Yeah. Yeah.
Corey Valley has 1,039, Rutland Town has 552, Wells Springs has 270, and Ira has 41.
And how does, does everybody pay a third to central office?
No, the assessment is based on those numbers I just gave you. It's an allocation based on your percentage of students compared to the total students in the S U. But the supervisory union representation is based on Title 16, 266.
Ah, yeah, 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 I get all that, I get all that. So not everybody pays a third?
No.
We pay the load a bit?
You're right, so if you look at the supervisory union budget, there's an allocation breakdown. Corey Valley pays 54.61%, Rutland Town's paying 29%, Wells Springs is paying 14.23%, and Ira's paying 2.15%.
So again, allocation of the votes are a little lopsided.
Considering we have a lot to deal with the budget, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Motion's been made to, to table this discussion to a further date? Next week? Or next? Tom, really?
Motion to table.
Motion on the table. Any discussion?
Well, we just keep doing that over, next, it's, that'll be some, that's the whole point of it. It's always, there's always something else that has to be discussed.
The motion can be voted down.
You know, we keep pushing, "Oh, we can't talk about it now because we have the budget." "Oh, we can't talk about it now because we're at the beginning of the school." There's always going to be something to have it, to never have the discussion, but like I said, this is my opinion, my, I'm bringing forth with this. If nobody else feels that, that this is necessary, then.
I think it is, considering.
Well, we can, can we, can we discuss the motion and will be added to, to our next
meeting's agenda to continue the discussion?
I would make an amendment to the motion that rather than just having this kind of surfacy conversation, it is important to understand what the process is, because it is not like you decide it tonight, and in three months, it's going to change. It is a process, and so I think it would behoove us to have that process to look over in conjunction with the conversation.
Okay. So an amendment has been made to the motion. Any discussion on the amendment, or the motion for that matter? Tabling it to next, to, to, to next meeting, to future, future, a future meeting? Next meeting, this discussion about. You, you would like to amend it to next meeting? He's out of whack, doesn't he? I mean, I guess I didn't realize there was that much of a discrepancy in. Numbers? Yeah. And I get it, you can't change it with a snap of a finger, I understand that.
You need to go to the next.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we have two amendments on the floor. We'll have to vote on them separately.
No, you're saying the amendment has to be...
Only one?
Right. Lisa's amendment has to be voted on first.
Okay, then we can... All right, Lisa has made an amendment to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries by majority. The amendment carries by majority, excuse me. And then, Tom, you have a motion?
I don't even know what we're doing.
We're talking about discussing this in the future.
Like, and I get it, it doesn't change in a second.
In a second, okay. So your motion is to discuss this, to add this to the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's how there's a big difference, who's flipping the bills and who gets to vote on our money and looks like we can get...
Okay, so an amendment has been...
Just to look at, or however it is awarded.
Been made to, to speak, to discuss this issue at our next monthly board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay. Mike, can you restate your motion, please?
Motion to table, motion to table, to a future discussion with the amendment that was voted on.
A motion has been placed on the floor. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. All right, moving on. To the look and listen tour. Linda?
I just wanted to mention that there was a, a, let me see if I can find it on my thing. Yeah, in one of the places, oh, oh, sorry, the Listening Learn... Just wanted to let everybody know that there's another one. I was able to get on to the Listening Learn tour on the one that was just on the computer, wasn't in a community. And there's another one coming up in December if somebody hasn't been able to get on it. It's either the Fourth or the Fifth of December. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And you just go on to the AOE. The good, the interesting part of the one that we did was we had people, community members, business people, educators from all over the state. So it wasn't just in one community, it was in like five, six, seven communities. And very interesting. So just wanted to let people know that there is something coming up. If they missed the other one, there's another one coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Moving on to new business. School choice. We're gonna skip over that one to executive session, right?
No, we can discuss this one.
Okay.
So there's a family that was a proctor who notified us that at the beginning of October they had moved to Fairhaven. They currently live in Fairhaven and we asked if the board would consider allowing their child to stay in their current school, which is Proctor-O'Malley, for the remainder of the year. Explaining to them that as per our policy, anything that falls before spring break, I do not have the authority, only the board has the authority. And so the parent had asked if I would bring it before the board for consideration.
Okay. Any discussion on what Chris just told us? Or any questions for Chris?
Need to give Chris a...
Okay.
Yes, we need a motion.
Need a motion to sustain the policy as outlined? I make a motion to sustain the policy as outlined.
A motion's been made. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the Wellness Center. Chris, do you want to handle this one?
Did you want to do the VSA/VSBA first?
Sure. Whichever one you wanted, yeah. Oops, sorry. I need stronger glasses.
I can quickly talk about this. I know that, you know, if there are additional questions, I'd be more happy to have Tammy Reskot, Tiffy Patterson, Dr. Stink, Sports Attendant, December meeting. So I just know that we will be transitioning away from the Wellness Center after winter break. And we are looking to, for those students, move back to school-based programs. Actually, I know that one of the students has transferred back to their home schools. That's just the update. So if there are any additional questions, I know that Tammy Reskot will be here at the December meeting, as well as the December meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, VSA slash VSBA Fall Conference, Linda?
Just that the one that I mentioned was the community engagement. And that one was really good about where they hired someone to make it more equitable for all the schools. Because there were people in the schools that were feeling that they were left out. And what they ended up doing was really engaging the community, actually going door-to-door with some families because they were not comfortable in answering surveys, or they were not comfortable in coming to the schools. They didn't feel comfortable in their school for whatever reasons. So they actually made a point of going door-to-door to talk with these people, to find out what exactly, did they want to see what happened to do with the money? You know, what was the most important for them in terms of this pot of money that they have? And how could they make it more equitable? And it was a very good presentation. It was up north, I don't know if it was Essex or Burlington, I can't remember, I don't have my notes, but it was a very good presentation.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to finance, monthly financials.
So any questions on the monthly reports?
Nope. Okay.
So Chris, I'm sharing a cost driver document. This document will also be up on the website starting tomorrow. So if there's slides you want to look at closer, you can look for the right extension of the website.
So real quick, before we get in, this is part of the GRCSU communication plan that we discussed. And so we looked at, I know that Louis and I had a long discussion over the past year as we looked at budgeting both within Corey Valley as well as within the SU. We've had a, received a variety of questions from individuals just about the budget themselves. And I know that one of the biggest battles that we face every year is just the information and misinformation that's out there around school budgets and how they're composed and what's in them. So what we thought we would like to do is just try to, you know, outline tonight is just some of the cost drivers that impact our budgets. This is not, you know, we're not trying to make any excuses. I think it's more just stating facts tonight, you know, of some of these drivers. We identified six main cost drivers. There are personnel costs, statewide health insurance, inflation, special education costs, facility repairs, and school construction, and then tuition, universal pre-K and occasional. Louis, I want you to catch up on this and this budget breakdown, sorry.
So we broke down the Corey Valley budget into this pie chart just to show you, so you can see exactly how much of each of these major categories the budget funds go towards. So the blue section, which is the biggest piece of the pie, is our personnel costs. That's approximately 65% of our budget. And that represents all the staff that are employed by Corey Valley Unified Union School District. There's also personnel costs in some of the other categories, in the other pieces of the pie, that are not employees of Corey Valley, but they're employees of the SU. So in the assessment category, as well as the SU Purchase Services category, there would be other personnel costs that are being passed down to Corey Valley from the SU. So when you look at the total budget, you're really looking at approximately 80% of our budget is personnel cost. So personnel cost represents all salaries and benefits for our employees. The next biggest category is the assessments, and that's broken down into two pieces. There's the general, there's the general fund and special ed. Each one has, is allocated to Corey Valley based on different metrics. So the general fund, which would consist of superintendent's office, the business office, technology, and curriculum, is broken down based on ADM, which is your total student count. And then special ed, which includes all the personnel that's in your, special ed personnel that's in your building, as well as outside placements and transportation, is allocated to Corey Valley based on IEP students that Corey Valley has. Next piece, which is that small sliver next to the assessments, is SU Purchase Services. This is mainly for employees that are employed by GRCSU that are billed back to Corey Valley because they work directly in Corey Valley schools. So for an example, for this would be a position that is partially grant-funded to a federal grant. So if you have an interventionist that works in one of your schools that is 50% grant-funded, they would be employed by the SU. And then the other 50% would be billed back directly to Corey Valley. The difference between an assessment and a purchase service is an assessment is billed based on a allocation metric, such as ADM or IEP students, where a purchase service is billed back directly to the schools that are using that service. So if there's a staff member that is employed by the SU but is only working in Pulteney, then only, only is billed back to that service. The other category is sort of just a placeholder for all the categories that are not listed on this pie. It includes, the biggest piece would be facilities. And then there's also supplies, extracurricular, U of B, special development. Transportation is the cost to transport students to and from school. Two of our towns provide transportation, one does not. It also includes field transportation. Debt services, that is any loans that we have taken out for long-term debt for building repairs. And tuition is mostly vocational tuition, which is Stafford, as well as universal pre-K, which allows parents to send their students to any approved school in Vermont for up to 10 hours of schooling.
Any questions?
On the personnel costs, those are negotiated contracts, correct?
Yeah, we're talking about that next slide.
Okay.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, go ahead, Louis.
So the next, and Mike kind of got excited there. That's why we're debating, I'm giving him no...
I'll show it to Mike.
The impact of personnel costs, you know, as we see here, and Mike alluded to that every employee is either GRCSU employee or Corey Valley School District employee. So I know that there's always this misconception that there is a Pulteney teacher or a West Rutland teacher, a Proctor teacher. We have Corey Valley staff, Corey Valley teachers. So when we look at personnel, we look at the large pool of staff within our facilities. Then each year we discuss how we move individuals around. Majority, you know, the staffing does not change from year to year, but there may be a situation where we may need to relocate a staff member or place to other. And I talk about this because, you know, the last, one of the last goal points does discuss about optimal class sizes, which we'll talk a little bit more about. The grid that Louis and I decided to show is broken down between the salary as well as the benefits. And I think what's, there is that misunderstanding sometimes when someone looks at their take over pay, they feel that that's it. But, you know, I understand, like, say, a staff member's making $60,000, but they're receiving $35,000 in benefits, that's really, the board is on the hook for, you know, $95,000. You know, a staff member says, "Well, it's just $6,000." That's really what it is. But for us, it is an additional cost. And so that's, you know, why we've, you know, the B high, which is down, 11.6 this year, which is, you know, I say down, but it's still, it's a double-digit, still double-digit increase. That has a great impact on Corey Valley with these more employees. So Louis?
Yes, the personnel cost includes all employees in our schools that are employed by Corey Valley. So it's anywhere from our parent educators to our administrators, teachers. A majority of those staff members are part of either the Teachers Association or the ESP Association, but it also does include non-union. What this graph is depicting is that benefits are approximately 25% of our total compensation. So for every dollar that we're spending on compensation, 25 cents of that is for benefits. Benefits can range pretty widely for an employee depending on the type of insurance that they take. Insurance is definitely the biggest benefit. So someone taking a buyback, which is then not taking your insurance, would cost $2,000, where someone who's taking a family plan could cost up to $36,000. So it can be a big range.
And as Mike had said, that when we look at, you know, our comfortably bargaining agreements, which determines salaries, that's something which we do as an SU. So it's not be able to do that individually or in the district, even in the SU. And we are currently with our support staff going to mediation and then we'll begin the teachers' negotiations next week. We'll begin the ground meeting. So that is something to consider as we are budgeting, that we are currently trying to settle both support staff and our teachers, and the impact that they have for our... Statewide Health Insurance, Louis, on your side?
So for health insurance, this graph is just showing increases each year. These are not cumulative increases, these are individual increases for each year. We have seen double-digit increases five out of the last six years, which has a significant impact on our budget. This year's increase is 11.9%, which is built into all of our budgets.
And inflation, as we know, CPI, you know, graph, the same impact that homeowners are seeing with gravity groceries, as they go to gas up, you know, schools experience the same, you know, hit. As we're looking at, you know, purchasing supplies, it would be toilet paper or food service, there would be, you know, increased costs there. So, you know, the same pressures and, you know, pains that our communities are feeling, schools are as well. I know that at the end of September 2024, the CPI was right around 3.4%. So that does impact, you know, our personnel. One thing that we have tried to do is, as we work with our facility directors, we look at trying to buy in bulk as opposed to individual contracts. We're looking at a conscious scale, which will kind of try to reduce some of those discretionary costs.
And inflation impacts one of the biggest categories that was on that pie, which is personnel costs. So as everything gets more expensive, the environment for increases, increases as well. And so we're constantly trying to play catch-up.
I have a question, may not be the right time, but we're not exempt from the proposed 75 cent per gallon fuel tax, are we?
No, we're not, not at this time.
Is this a slide showing the four years around the CPI?
Hopefully that one exists. So special education is at the SU level. It's one of those funds that we talked about, area that is assessed back to each district based on the number of IEP students. This graph just depicts how the SU special education budget is broken down, with the largest category being personnel costs at 77%. Transportation is at 3.4%. Tuition is for our students that are sent to outside placements, and that is at 10.7%. Professional services is for vendors that we're bringing in, whether it be for our students in our schools or even to one of the outside placements. That's at 3.7%. Excess costs are those students that are going to a regular ed program, but they're also receiving IEP services. but they're also receiving IEP services. So if you have a student that say is going to, say, Mill River through a choice program, and they're receiving IEP services, we would be charged a regular tuition for that student. They will receive excess cost tuition invoice for any IEP services they're receiving. And that makes up approximately three point eight percent. About three years ago, the special ed funding had changed. We were in a reimbursable model, which means that we were getting approximately fifty-five cents reimbursement from the state for every dollar that we spent. Act one seventy-three changed that from a reimbursable model to a block grant model, which means we no longer get reimbursed for every dollar we spent. We just get a flat dollar amount for every student that we have. With that change, there was a transition period of four years. Next year is the fourth year of that transition period. GRCSU was a low-spending district. And is part of that transition means that, and that means that we have been receiving larger increases in our block grant every year than, than the average. So looking at next year's block grant, as we discussed at the SU board meeting, we were seeing a ten percent increase in our revenue, where most people are going to be receiving just the, the normal inflationary increase of approximately three percent. So looking at FY twenty-seven, that should level off and we will not be seeing those larger-than-normal increases in our revenue coming in.
Can I ask, oh, sorry, can I ask a quick question of this slide before we move on? Is this pie chart fit into the, so back on that very first pie chart, right, in what influencers the school budgets? You talked about assessments, which are SU costs for central office and special ed, right? So is there a way, so and that assess, those assessments are thirteen point eight percent of the total Corey Valley budget. Is there a way to break out special education costs to put a number on that? So what percentage of the thirteen point eight percent is special ed? So we have a better understanding of what we're talking about in terms of.
So for Corey Valley, the central office assessment is approximately nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and the special ed assessment is one point eight million. So it's about a third of the assessment. And special ed, oh, general fund is about a third, and special ed is about two-thirds.
And that can vary depending on population and student needs, correct?
Correct. It changes every year based on how much your ADM or IEP count has changed compared to the change of the whole district and the changes of the other district. So if everybody goes up, then it stays pretty much the same. But if you go up and everybody else stays the same and goes down, then your percentage goes up.
Any more questions?
Thanks.
Okay.
All right. As most of you are aware, obviously maintaining a career facility because it doesn't cost driver, you know, we have five facilities in Corey Valley. Facility, there will be cost, and we understand that. You know, there are minor repairs or major repairs, and you know, we can plan for the minor, but majors such as like HVAC updates, if they're roofed or fail, or you know, boiler, that does have a significant impact on the budget and budget considerations. You know, the states had released that, you know, some figures where they identified or estimated that the made facility for the state in January twenty twenty-four was just north of two hundred and twenty-eight million. And then the estimated projections, what they believe is unaccounted, is over the next twenty years, save over six billion dollars. And I know that we all saw the facilities assessments, and you know, those, those numbers may be a bit off one way or another, just because a lot of the items were estimated because they know that they didn't really get actual bids. But this just gives you a kind of ballpark that's here in state of mind. We do have a variety, a lot of our school facilities are kind of aging out at the same time, and you know, and the impacts of that. So the important thing for us is we develop our five-year capital maintenance plans, make sure that we are aware of any big tick items that we budget accordingly with regard to that. And you know, make, make some hard decisions as a result, but it's something that, you know, we're aware of and, you know, enough to connect to us across the state as well. And we'll be interested to see what the state does with this school construction as well. So Louis, next, Louis, the session. Tuition costs.
So Corey Valley maintains a pre-K through twelve district, so there isn't any choice for any students except for. Pre-K is a universal pre-K and vocational. So those are the tuitions that Corey Valley is paying. Vocational tuition is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. And preschool costs are about two hundred thousand. So approximately a total of about a million dollars. Vocational tuition is based on two factors. It's the Stafford tuition, as well as the number of students that are going, which is based on a six semester on average. At this point, in your budget, it's still pending. We haven't received all of that data, but that can vary from year to year. And then the pre-K tuition is a set amount that's based, it's a number that comes out from the state around December first, and it's based on for ten hours of service.
We do know that the Stafford proposed budget right now is looking at four point five percent increase. So, but that has not been proved as of yet. So instead, we just wanted to outline some of the main cost drivers. Mostly, as you are aware, these, you know, VSB updates, you know, you know, things. Just to bring this to your attention, but also any, any member who may watch it at home, that as we're working through our budget, there are a variety of factors that affect our budget, but also our tax rates. And so just, you know.
I think it's also worth noting that so everything that we've just talked about is only one piece of, of the process, and that's just developing the budget that the board has control over and that we submit to the taxpayers. The other piece, which is the, the calculation of the tax rate, is sort of a separate process. We take what, what we do here, and then we apply the factors that we have no control over that are provided to us by the state, which is the yield that is, the tax commissioner gets his recommendation on December first, but isn't set by the legislators until even some, a lot of times after town meeting day, which April, April, May. And then there's the CLA, which will get those numbers in the end of December, which is based on this common level appraisal, which is based on home values. And then the last piece is the weighted pupil count, which will also receive the middle of December. So we take that data, we, we apply it to, to the budget that has been created and approved by the board to calculate the action.
I think those very presentation documents cover quite, quite a, a lot of questions to be answered by the unit. Thank you.
As Louis said at the beginning, this will be uploaded to the Corey Valley website. So the Proctor, Pulteney, West Rutland pages, GRCSU main page. Louis and I will also be working on a small presentation that we'll upload throughout budget basics, which we'll, if we take a look at it, we must go through the timeline, as well as just talk about how just, you know, tech, you know, the tax rate, how that, the flow charts, we'll walk it through, just for people to check out and better understand, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we move on? All right, moving on to personnel action.
Are we going to do the budget discussion?
Are we going to talk about the budget?
Eric doesn't want to. Eric doesn't want to.
It's nice we understand it, now we're just going to.
We understand it. That's enough.
Why am I even here?
She's just trying to move on. Want to talk about the budget? All right, let's talk about the budget. Go ahead. I'm just trying to make it easier for you. Would I get no support?
Louis made a motion, unfortunately can't.
Such a fool follower, Mike.
I got your badge.
So the budget was in the package. It's two pages long. It, there's the summary of changes, which highlights all of the changes that are impacted in this budget, as well as a summary of the changes by category for both expenses and revenues. So the budget that you have in front of you, total expense is up by five point two percent. Education spending is up by four point nine percent. Education spending is the amount that we need to raise in property taxes. It's the total expense minus any local revenues. Local revenues or any revenues that are not property taxes, such as our tuition revenue, prior year surpluses, any one-time money, interest income, student activity income, stuff like that. All the assessments in the budget are based on the approved SU budget that was approved this month. Tuition revenue is estimated to decrease by a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That is based on a drop in estimated student count that are attending our, our schools. It is also based on an increase in our, in our current rate, which we'll discuss at the next month's meeting. And we'll look to approve that at the next meeting. It includes an eleven point nine percent increase in health insurance, which is approximately two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's a one point three percent of the increase. It includes a prior year SU assessment refund. This was decided at the last SU board meeting to give last year's refund to apply towards next year's budget. That's two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. There is a, the new state child tax, child tax credit, not credit, just a child tax, forty-one thousand dollars. Includes last year's Corey Valley surplus of seven hundred and six thousand dollars. Currently, that full amount is in here as a local revenue. I am, in here, I have removed the lease payments for the car, and I'm going to recommend that we buy a driver's ed car this year so that we can discontinue lease payments. And then there was just some shifts in phone, internet and software. Moved from the school budgets to the SU Purchase Service line, just switching coding. There's also two personnel changes in here. It's an increase of a music teacher from a point eight to a point, or to a one oh, so a point two increase. And there's currently a point five custodian increase in here, which was being covered by the special ed wellness center. But with that wellness center going, transitioning to the schools, we're no longer receiving that revenue from the SU.
The GRCSU budget was zero percent. Was that correct?
That is correct. So both the general fund and special ed assessment are down.
Is it possible, based on Tina's request at the next meeting, that we could have the number of tuition students we would need to receive from Rutland Town to either Proctor and/or West Rutland to offset running a bus? Thank you.
Any other questions? Sarah?
So at the last board meeting, the board asked us to bring back a level set budget, which is what you have in front of you, a five percent budget, which is also what you have in front of you, approximately four point nine, and a three percent budget. So you don't have a three percent budget in front of you, but I will tell you that it would, to get to three percent, we would need to cut three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Before going through the exercise of making those cuts, we just wanted to have the conversation here to see, do you want us to get to that amount and make those cuts? The other thing I will also, would like to caution you on is that this budget includes approximately one million dollars of one-time money. So between the SU assessment refund of two seventy-four and the surplus of seven hundred thousand, we are looking at approximately a million dollars. When we look at FY twenty-seven budget next year, if we don't have the same million dollars, which I don't anticipate we will, we will be starting with a million dollar revenue hole to start the budget process, which is approximately five percent increase. If we were to remove that one-time money of this budget, the budget, education spending would be up approximately ten percent.
And remind us what our budget was up last year?
So expense was up by two point five percent. And education spending was up by one point two percent.
Say that again, one point.
Total expense was up by two point five, and education spending was up by one point two. And the tax rate increase across all three districts was an average increase of about two point four percent, I believe.
If that million dollars stays in there, where are we looking at? Five percent more for next budget? But that's where we, where am I saying?
If we have no surplus or no refunds from the SU, yes, we would be starting five percent increase before we add in any inflationary factor or any increase in wages. Corey Valley is a low-spending district. We are one, as we looked at, I think, the last month or the month before, our spending for pupils is ten thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars. I think we're number eleven in the state as far as the lowest, lowest spend, eleventh lowest spender. So, I mean, at some point, we are going to have to increase a little bit. It's just a matter of, do we want to do it this year or next year? And we can, we can start phasing it in over a few years as well, so.
So explain what it means if we are a million dollars in the hole to start.
So, I mean, there's two bases to the budget, there's revenue and expense. The number that the, the board approves and the taxpayers approve is the expense number. The expense number is not going to change based on this discussion. It's the education spending that's going to change. So that's the amount that we need to submit to Montpelier to determine when our tax rate's going to be. So when we take our expense minus our local revenues, next year, we don't have any surplus, our local revenues are going to be one million dollars less, which means our education spending will be one million dollars less. So we'll have to raise one extra, one million dollars extra in property taxes. I mean, it's not that straightforward because it's, it's statewide education. But our tax rate will increase based on, based on that need to raise an extra million dollars. GFCU, approximately five percent.
Any other questions? So do we need to approve this?
No, we're not looking for any approvals tonight, but I think it is important to get some directions.
When is it going to be important to, to approve it? When do you need this approved budget?
So next month, we'll probably, we'll look at any small changes that have occurred between this month and next month. So we should have some more solid numbers on vocational tuition. Plus, we'll consult with the administration to see if there's any changes that were not put into this round and need to get put into the next round. We'll also have some estimates on the yield based on December first commissioner's letter. I don't anticipate having the pupil counting unless something changes from previous history, and we won't have CLA numbers. So we can have some big picture conversations about what the tax commissioner says at the next meeting, as far as like the direction statewide, and what that's going to look like. But we won't really be able to get a good, good picture as to what your tax rate's going to look like based on any solid numbers yet. We can just do some estimates. December, we don't usually approve the budget in December either, unless we, I'm not going to say, it's never happened, it has happened before. But typically, we look at January, the beginning of January to approve the budget. By then, we'll have CLA, we will have the weighted pupils, and we'll have the estimate on the yield.
We can do now to stop that hole for next year?
Well, I think, I think there's, there's.
Have the whole chunk, but.
There's two things we can look at. I mean, if you feel comfortable with the expense, then we can look at the, the revenue side and. side and utilizing some of that revenue in other ways so that we are not using it all in this month, in this year. So if we were to use more of that revenue, then we would be looking at a larger increase than the 5%. So like if we were to want to go up to 7% this year, we would utilize some of that revenue this year. That would be a bigger increase in the tax rate for this year, but it would not be a large increase the following year. It would's kind of like just a steady increase. To use that revenue, we can look at two different ways. We can put an item on the ballot, a separate item on the ballot, asking the taxpayers to put some of that into our capital improvement fund like we have in the past. Or we can put one-time expenditures into our budget for facilities with the intent to take them out next year. Because we have so much extra revenue in there one time, we can put a one-time expense in and we can assign specific projects to it. So we like, we know a boiler needs to be replaced, we can, rather than take that out of our existing capital improvement plan, we can put a line item in the budget to to replace a boiler for $100,000. And so that's increasing our expense and so it's utilizing some of that revenue for this budget.
What does the capital expense fund currently have in it? Is it eight something or is it less than that?
So the capital improvement is 874 and the co-curricular is 217.
I would feel more comfortable if we're giving you direction for the next meeting to include one-time expenditures in this budget rather than asking taxpayers to see a 7% bump and put money into the expenditure, the capital improvement. That would be my note.
And how does the board feel about the current expenditure increase?
I don't think we can go higher than that and have a viable budget. I I don't think we can eviscerate the budget by with the three to 3% and take out $340,000 and have viable systems. So I wouldn't support that, but on the flip side, I don't think we can go up to 7% and percent a budget that's going to be accepted, in my opinion.
If we can get one next year, though, that's going to be possibly 10 or 12%. Just trying to ease the, take a chunk this year instead of trying to take a huge bite next year, but that's me personally.
Right, but I think the offset one's doing some of the capital improvement and building those in this year, right? So then next year, those aren't part of it. I just think if I'm going to the voting booth and I'm voting and I know you have $874,000 in that fund and you're asking me to put $300,000 more in there and you're taking out the budget, that that's impacting my, what I'm going to pay. So to me, that's a tougher sell because that's going to then factor into being, it could be at 6.8 or 7%, right?
I don't know if we're saying the same thing. So what I was suggesting, and you tell me if it's the same thing that you're saying, is so right now, our expense is up by 5.2, education spending is up by 4.9.
Right.
So one of the suggestions I gave was a sample, add $200,000 in expense to this budget, which would bring, increase our expense and our education by 6%. So every $200,000 is approximately 1%. So that would increase both the education spending expense by 1%. Then next year, we would take that $200,000 out so that we've utilized $200,000 of that surplus, which is one-time money with a one-time expense.
Right, but you said putting money in the capital improvement fund.
No, that was one of the options was to ask the taxpayers to put money into the capital improvement fund. That's one option. The other option is putting a one-time expense in to use up some of that one-time revenue.
Because they give you separate balance, right?
The, putting the money into the capital improvement is a separate balance, yes.
But with that one-time expense, we we would see those numbers go from 5.2% to 6.2. Is that what you're essentially saying, same with 4.9%?
I mean, I guess a third option, which is maybe what I think you were saying is because we have 874,000 currently in our capital improvement plan, we can take $200,000 out of our expense budget, utilizing capital improvement funds for next year and not budget funds, which would lower our expense by 1% to 4.2, 4.2, and our education spending to 4.2, 3.9. And then the following year, we have to put that, we have to put that expense back in.
Could you have different scenarios for next month based on these three different assumptions?
Yes, I could bring, I could bring scenarios forward, but I mean, I I think it would help, though, if I got a little sense from the board as to like what we feel our max is for this year and what we feel comfortable with for next year. This is unlimited scenarios that I can.
Yeah, you don't want to, and I'm just using hypothetical number, you don't want a five with an eight or a nine coming next year when you've done a six and may only had a seven next year.
I think if if trends continue, I mean, we we will have another surplus at Corey Valley next year. I mean, we we don't spend every dollar that we have. We know we have, tend to have open, some open positions that are hard to fill and even though we have, say, a supply budget, we don't work to spend every dollar, we buy what we need and sometimes we go over, sometimes we go under, but generally, looking at the budget as a whole, we go under. So that 10% is is worst case scenario, but so maybe you're with some surplus, you're looking at 7%, 8%. I mean, it's really not known, which we're really in this year to really know where we're going. But I could bring back a 7% this or 6% and 7% for this year. Yeah, if that works.
And then what would that, where would that put us for the following year?
So 4% we had this year, you're cutting 1% off for next year.
It feels like I've heard 7 is like a real hard ceiling. Does that, how's that sound about?
I think 6 is a real.
I think 6 is a real hard ceiling.
I just mean like don't come back with a scenario that's higher than 7, but but it might be worth looking at 7 if we're going to talk about what.
Sure, we can look at it, but I just. I mean, even at the SU, when we were going to do certain things, I think it was Louis who said 7 is the not a number I want to look at. Is that?
Yeah, I don't like 7%.
Yeah.
But we're talking about the reality of what we're looking toward the future at this point, right? I think that's the.
Can't get it to 3.
So so last year, we were tasked with cutting and we cut $1.4 million, but part of that cut was using one-time money.
Right.
And so we sort of just kicked the can to this year. And so eventually it's going to head up.
Are we all set? Okay. Moving on. Thank you. Personnel action finally. Contract recommendations. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to some contract recommendations.
Okay, motions on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to retirements and non-renewals. Do. Motion to accept. Motion's on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. General public comments. Do you have anything to? No?
Thank you for considering. And one of the, I forgot to mention that, the RNESU, which is Otter Valley, Barstow, I don't know what other schools are in it, but they they do have a bus that picks up any students that go to Rutland. It takes a long time, but they do kind of collect them piecemeal along the way. And so that was one of the reasons I thought it might be something to look into for our SU.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to future meeting dates. December 12th, 2024 at 6:00 PM, regular meeting. Future agenda items.
Can I just ask, and this is probably not for an upcoming meeting because the budget feels like the priority, right, and on our agenda, but I went to the EQS presentation today that was really, it was really interesting. It was it was geared at what's school, sort of a really brief overview of the EQS and then geared to thinking about what school board's role might be. But I was curious if there might be an opportunity to hear what the, what Corey Valley is doing right now around or is planning to do in the future or to around implementation requirements for EQS. And so that's probably not a next month or, you know, whenever there's time to kind of fit that in, but.
We can put that in.
Yeah.
It tends to a lot of work with EQS.
Yeah, there's a team of us that are going through the, VPA is putting on a training. So there's Liz, myself, Lisa, we're all going through, so we're kind of strategizing at this point.
Nice.
That's what we're doing currently.
Cool. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, when there's an opportunity and without adding a lot of other things, yeah, this was led by someone from VSA and then another woman who's on the Washington County school board, I think. Yeah, so really.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Executive session. I have a motion to go into executive session. Motion's been made. We will take two minutes and.
I'd say like five minutes.
Five minutes?
He's got to pack up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm rushing. Five minutes and we'll start executive session.